Welcome to a meeting of your Planning Commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plank City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Good afternoon and welcome to the June 9, 2025, public hearing of the Planning Commission on Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. For those attending in person and wishing to speak on any agenda item, please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. To minimize feedback in the audio, all online participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak. Planning Commissioners should unmute themselves to indicate that they would like to speak. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. When your name is called, you will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking, state your name at the beginning of your comments, and adhere to the time limits. If anyone has difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to provide comments to be included in the record for the local government hearing, please email them to planner@planncom.org. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following the presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will then be afforded a three-minute period of rebuttal or response. Planning Commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed, and upon a motion, a second and discussion of vote will be taken. To all participants, please note that tonight's hearing concerns proposed changes to the comprehensive plan. Presentations should not include matters related to zoning applications and site plans that are not before the commission. Zoning conditions are not relevant to plan amendments and may not be considered by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission's purview and making a recommendation is limited to consistency or inconsistency with the comprehensive plan. And with that, I would like to please ask the clerk to go ahead and call roll.
Bowden?
Here.
Fuzzah?
Here.
Cardenas?
Here.
Kona?
Here.
Cruss?
Here.
Lenkos?
Here.
Lauk?
Here.
Saria? Seben?
Orton?
Here.
Barry?
Here.
Joseph?
Here.
You have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. All right. Our first item of business is 2A, HCCPA 2508, Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment 16410, Baum Waimama Road, Urban Service Area Expansion. And the presenter is Alexis Myers.
Good evening, Commissioners, Alexis Myers Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present HCCPA 2508 located at 16410 Baum Waimama Road for the Urban Service Area Expansion. First, I just want to say that there were some supporting documents that were inadvertently left out, which I have printed out and included right in front of you. This is a privately initiated map amendment that is large in scale and approximately 470.9 acres. The applicant is requesting to expand the urban service area. This amendment is associated with HCCPA 2507, which is a request to change the future land use category from AR 1 to 5 to RES 4. This is the general location map. As I mentioned before, this amendment is associated with HCCPA 2507. It is in the rural area and within the limits of the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Community Plan. It is located north of State Road 674 and east of Baum Waimama Road. Here is the area of the site. The site is outlined in pink, and the blue line indicates the existing urban service area boundary. Within the past year, the Board of County Commissioners directed Planning Commission staff to study certain areas for the urban service area expansion. The Waimama Village Residential 2 and residential Plan 2 future land use categories were a part of the first part of the study. There are two other areas apart under the study, Little Manatee South and I want, I'm sorry, the I-4 corridor. The publicly initiated amendments are HCCPA 2445, which is just to the east, I'm sorry, to the west of Baum Waimama Road. And then 2447, which is north as well up here. Next are the impacts. This amendment would bring 470.9 acres into the urban service area, requiring at a minimum connection to public water and sewer. As far as agency comments, this amendment received no objections from the following agencies. As far as the consistency review, this proposed amendment is inconsistent with the following objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan. The proposal does not meet the intent of Future Land Use Section Objective 4.4 and Future Land Use Section Policy 4.4.1, which require new development to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. The applicant provided additional information in the revised request submitted on April 25, 2025, that notes existing easement and preservation mitigation banks to the east of the property, which is privately owned by the applicant but not a part of the application. At this time, there is no development pattern to the east and to the west of Baum Waimama Road. The proposed future land use designation of RES 4 would allow for a higher, I'm sorry, a higher density residential development that is not consistent with the adopted future land use category of the AR 1 to 5, which is intended for a long-term agricultural character, agricultural and mining productivity, and other rural uses. Also, according to Future Land Use Section Policy 4.7.4, when planning the location of new non-residential developments at intersections meeting locational criteria, a transition in intensity of non-residential uses shall be established which is compatible to the surrounding character. While the parcels that are transmitted to RES 4 on the western side of Baum Waimama Road, there would not be a gradual transition to the east side between the different land uses. To the east is the agricultural mining 1 to 10 and agricultural mining 1 to 20 future land use categories, which are intended for the long-term agricultural character, agricultural and mining productivity, and other rural uses. This amendment also is, does not meet the intent of the South Shore Area-Wide Systems Community Plan of the livable community elements. Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And this concludes my presentation for HCCPA 2508.
Thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation?
Mr. Chair, just a piece of housekeeping. I'd intended to just give one presentation on 2507 and 2508 together. Is that, is that okay with you?
Can you get it in in your 15 minutes?
All right, I'm going to go to the Elmo here first. Jake Kramer, Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street. So you all know I hate to come before you with, with applications that don't have staff support. Respectfully, I think staff just missed a couple of very important items on this, is this property is the transition between industrial land and conservation land. Okay? You all approved not very long ago the Waimama Village Plan. That plan is an overlay that allows industrial and employment uses. Our property is in the red, so industrial employment uses are explicitly allowed in the overlay by that plan. The context of Waimama Downtown East is to focus large-scale uses, including industrial, outside of the compact downtown while providing enhanced mobility to the adjacent downtowns. So this is an employment center. We're proposing a suburban-scale density right next door. Okay, could we transfer back over to the presentation, please? Okay, and again, the, the second really important factor is, so again, to our west, we have industrial uses and suburban densities allowed. To our east, we have Carlton Branch. Carlton Branch is an important natural resource in this part of the county. And this is not a developer coming to you all saying, hey, I'd like to develop. In exchange, I will go conserve this natural resource. This landowner's already done it. They've already created the conservation directly to the east that will serve as the buffer to those ag lands further, further east. Now, the, the current, historically, this has been ag land. Currently, it's a permitted field dirt operation, right? They supply a lot of South County for their road building and other construction needs. And post-mining, as you'll see as we get into the presentation, agricultural uses, because the land area is so small that's going to be remaining, agricultural uses really are not going to be feasible. So we have not filed a companion rezoning, because this, this is years down the road, right? We're setting the table, just like the Board of County Commissioners did when they converted WVR 2 next door into R4. So the growth has come to our doorstep, and what we're just suggesting is that an arbitrary line that was drawn in 1989 as WVR 2, back then it was RP 2, that arbitrary line from 1989, it's not relevant anymore. That's, that's really all we're, we're saying today. So we're proposing to integrate these two, these lands are irregularly shaped because we're only asking to bring the uplands in. The, the conservation lands are going to remain. Again, here, you can see that again, the mitigation bank lands and how they're being preserved. And again, for those of you who aren't familiar with mitigation banks, they're preserved in perpetuity, right? This is not an agricultural conservation easement where the land is still being worked. This is preserved forever. And they have an obligation to the Army Corps of Engineers, SWF MUD, and DEP, not only to preserve those lands but to enhance them, right? So they, they have to become as if they're natural. That's the whole purpose of this conservation easement. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to our land planner, David Smith, to give a little bit more of the historical and planning context.
Thank you, Commissioners. So looking at the, the current slide up there, basically, it's representing the R4 that's going to be right across the street and, and the R4 that we propose. What we'll, what you'll see is that the developable land that we're looking at, once the lakes are dug and the conservation area is recognized, it's staying in place, basically provides a great transition between our property and the adjacent AR property across the creek system that's been identified. In the earlier graphic, you can also see that there's only one little portion of the property along 674 that actually will end up abutting AR. That is not the creek system that we're protecting. The land to our north is going to R4. The land to our west is going to R4. And so this little strip that we're proposing is providing a transition exactly like the county is doing right now. They did not take that policy, and the Planning Commission did not use that policy to say gradual transitions when it moved R4 to Baum Waimama Road right across from AR. That's because those policies are development policies. Those policies are put for transitions in density and densities when you actually come to develop. If you look in the comprehensive plan, the section of the comp plan it's in is the development section. Land use is not development. Land use is setting the, basically the umbrella for you to come in and say, I would like to develop my property. Here's how I like to develop it. All those transitions of density, the compatibility concerns, the surrounding neighborhood will all be evaluated at that time. Now, we're just trying to determine, is this a regional reasonable transition and an efficient use of infrastructure, since Baum Waimama Road is likely going to be the utility corridor to service the property on the west? It makes more sense to have lines going both directions to efficiently use the infrastructure. Here's a better graphic showing the developable area. And as you can see, we could have come in and lessed out the lakes and lessed out, you have everything else, but we purposely said, nope, we're going to show you exactly what we have, what the buffer and transition is, and we're going to leave the rest of our property AR in this corridor for the creek. So again, you can see we have about 200 acres of developable land, about 3.5 units per acre is probably what it may yield at max. Again, at the time of zoning, that's when we'll look at the adjacent property and see what the transitions are, what is developed in the area. It's not surprising that there aren't four unit per acre developments to our north and four to our south. Matter of fact, there aren't even four to our west, but that's now R4, because it doesn't apply at this point in time. That policy is not intended to be indicating this, or else you would never have an urban service boundary expansion, because it would be expanding the urban service line, and you only have these higher densities when you move that line. Everything else has to be RES 2, RES 1, AR, or greater in intensity. This is just an example of properties that usually develop around man-made lakes. Here again, it shows the transition. And notice to the north of this, where the Baum Waimama Road moves north, all that's going to RES 4 as well. So again, as I had indicated before, the closed captioning keeps uncovering it up, but there's an area there that is halfway down our frontage, so that any commercial locational criteria or any development we come in for non-residential use, again, is going to comply with that policy that was stated, the 4.7, that we're going to have to have gradual transitions of intensity and density every year at the corner across from the industrial that's allowed, and less intense as you go down 674 to adjacent properties. So I think the, the staff has essentially taken the policies they have, because there are no policies that say when you do a map amendment for higher intensity, these are all the policies you review. What it has is a bunch of policies that are generally applicable when you expand the urban service boundary. And so what we've shown you is that we're approximate to exist an urban service boundary. We are similar to and exactly identical to the RES 4 that will follow the, the expansion, and we're unique. Nobody else is going to come to you with a set of facts that says, hey, about 60% of our property is going to be in lakes, and the rest of the property we own is in AR that's in a mitigation bank preserve. So it's this little strip of R4 that we believe is a logical extension of the USA and keeps an intent with the B OCC. B OCC did not come and say, we are not going to hear anything beyond this. They just said, hey, water and sewers are already allowed here. There's some higher density development that's come in RP 2, so let's look at that area first for the USA expansion. They didn't say, okay, you can't go any further than this. Basically, that's why we have a process for USA expansions and why the applicant is applied today. Jake, I'll answer any questions.
Thanks, Jake Kramer, again. So, you know, just go back to this, this graphic. And, and really, all we're suggesting here is this line where you see R4, again, that was originally drawn in 1989. That was back when we were using basically crayons to mark up maps, and no one even imagined we would see growth like we've seen in South County down, down in this area at that, at that time in Waimama. Since then, a lot has happened. One of the biggest thing that's happened is you all approved the, the update to the Waimama Village Plan, which essentially brings industrial and commercial uses in addition to the suburban density right to our doorstep. It's going to encourage those utilities to be developed down Waimama, Baum Waimama Road. And we think a more natural transition is, is using, using a natural feature rather than a road where the county's not going to be able to get its bang for its buck on that investment. So with that, I'll reserve any time for rebuttal and happy to answer any questions. Our team and the client engineers here, if you have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. We didn't have, well, I have one name on the list signed up for this one, so I'll call it. See if they want to speak in person. Todd Randolph? You have three minutes.
Hey, my name is Todd Randolph, and please deny HCCPA 2507 and 2508. This is not compliant with the comprehensive plan. I'm an active member of the Sierra Club Tampa Bay group, and we are concerned, you know, with this amendment here. I'm personally concerned with the sustainability and resiliency of the area, and I'd like to highlight your attention to the letters that have been submitted on behalf of Sierra Club by others within the Sierra Club organization. If you read through this, I find it very convincing. The Hillsborough County Environmental Protection Commission stated the following, "The proposed future land use may not be compatible for the subject property due to the amount of wetlands on site. Additionally, development of the site may present considerable permitting challenges." So that's straight from the EPC. And, you know, this is something that, you know, we should take into consideration with the hurricanes that we endured last year. There's a $709 million grant, federal grant for disaster recovery and hurricane resilience. So keeping our natural low-lying areas safe from overdevelopment is low-hanging fruit that is cost-effective in providing for storm resilience. So what we're seeing right now is a huge emphasis on resilience, $709 million on resilience. So that is a topic of concern in this county. Thank you for, for that, and that's about all I have on that.
Thank you. All right. It's the only individual that we had sign up in the public comment for this item. Yep. So I will turn it back over to the applicant for a response.
Sure. So I'll just note, Jake Kramer, for the record, I'll just note that we did have a really good community engagement session out, out near the property. I, I haven't heard from Mr. Randolph. I had no idea he was coming to oppose this, so I, I didn't hear anything really specific to the property in his comments, but we did have a number of citizens that did come to the meeting and share their concerns, and they have not submitted any opposition to this application. They're not here today either. And, and now, EPC always comments, hey, there may be wetlands on your property, right? That's, this is, it's a desktop review, and they didn't object. I've had applications that EPC formally objects to. This was not an objection. This was simply them saying, hey, you're going to have to deal with this at the permitting process, and, and we know that. So again, you know, this, this is exactly the types of areas where we want to develop, right? It's right next, right next door to, to the designated Waimama Downtown area. And so for those reasons, we would request your support tonight on this application and the next one. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I'll turn it over to the Commissioners now for comments, questions, discussions on this item. I am not seeing a lot of excitement. Commissioner Cruss?
I don't remember seeing, there's a neighborhood group. I'm, I'm not remembering the name of it right now in Waimama. Can, can you tell us what? Can, can you tell us what their feedback was on this? Does anyone happen to know?
I think Ms. Arnita hasn't.
I, I don't know that we've gotten any specific feedback from the Wimama group. I don't know if the applicant has.
We've not received any feedback at all from them. The Baum Civic Association did send some representatives to our community meeting, and as far as I know, we addressed their concerns.
All right. Any other questions from the commissioners or thoughts, comments, discussion items? Not seeing lights, so going once, going twice. I'm going to close the public comment on this one and open it up to motions from the commissioners on this item. Commissioner Kona, sorry.
Yep. I'll make a motion to find HCCPA 2508 comprehensive plan amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan based on flu policy 2.3.9.
All right. We have a motion of consistency finding based on flu policy 2.3.9. Can we get a couple more policies? Usually Tracy likes to give us like two or three. Let's see if Ms. Arnita might have. It's all right.
I'm happy to include objective 4.4 as well, which they-
Okay. So 2.3.9, objective 4.4, and that's a consistency motion by Commissioner Kona. Is there a second out there? Commissioner Seaborn?
Second.
All right. Commissioner Seaborn seconds the motion. Are there any questions from the commissioners? Clarifications required? Again, it's a consistency finding, signing 2.3.9 and objective 4.4. All right. Would all signify their agreement by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, we're going, we're going, we're going to the roll call.
No.
Buzza?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kona?
Yes.
Kress?
No.
Lauk?
Yes.
Lenkos?
No.
Seaborn?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to three. Commissioner Bowden, Kress, and Lenkos voted no.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Onto our next agenda item, 2B, HCCPA 25-07, comprehensive plan map amendment 16410 Baumwimama Road, and the presenter is Alexis Myers.
Yes. Good evening again, commissioners. Alexis Myers, planning commission staff, here to present HCCPA 2507 located at 16410 Baumwimama Road. This is a privately initiated map amendment that is large in scale and approximately 470.9 acres. The applicant is requesting to change the future land use designation from agricultural rural 1 to 5 to residential 4. This is the general location map. It is associated with HCCPA 2508 to expand the urban service area. It is in the rural area within the limits of the South Shore Area Wide Systems Community Plan. It is north of State Road 674 and east of Baumwimama Road. Here is the aerial of the site. The site is outlined in pink, and a blue line indicates the urban service area boundary. The site currently has agricultural, single family uses, and vacant land. The site also has wetlands and is in the FEMA flood zone AE. Agricultural is to the east, west, and north. There are single family uses to the north, south, and east, and further west in the urban service area. Vacant land is to the north, south, and east, while natural preservation is directly west. Lastly, there are public, quasi-public institution uses to the south and west. As I mentioned in the last amendment, within the past year, the Board of County Commissioners directed planning commission staff to study certain areas for the urban service area expansion. And for 24, HCCPA 2445, it was for the western side of Baumwimama Road. Here we have some pictures of the site. This is looking east from Baumwimama Road to the single family use on the subject site. This is looking west of the subject site from Baumwimama Road. This is on the subject site looking west to school. And this is looking east of the subject site. And this is looking north of the subject site, of the subject site, to the agricultural uses. And then this is looking south toward, towards the subject site from Baumwimama Road. Currently, the future land use designation is agricultural rural 1 to 5. The agricultural rural 1 to 5 category allows one dwelling unit per five gross acres and a maximum floor area ratio of 0.25. This designation allows for the consideration of farms, ranches, feedlots, residential, neighborhood, commercial, office, and industrial uses related to agricultural uses and mining related activities. Other future land use categories shown in this map include Wimama Village Residential 2 and natural preservation to the west and south, and agricultural 1 to 10 to the east. The applicant is proposing to amend the future land use category to residential 4. The residential 4 category allows four dwelling units per gross acre and a maximum floor, floor area ratio of 0.25. This designation allows for the consideration of agricultural, residential, neighborhood, commercial, office uses, and multipurpose projects. Next are the impacts. As far as existing conditions, currently under AR 1 to 5, the site can consider 94 dwelling units or 5,128,101 square feet of non-residential uses. Under the proposed future land use designation of rez 4, the site could consider 1,883 dwelling units or the same amount of square footage for non-residential uses. During the rezoning process, commercial locational criteria may affect the allowable square footage for potential non-residential development. The proposed amendment will result in the increase in development potential by allowing higher residential and greater commercial intensity. Next are the agency comments. This proposed amendment received no objections from the following agencies. As far as the consistency review, the proposed amendment is consistent with the following objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan. And planning commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And this concludes my presentation for HCCPA 2507. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer, did you want to?
Just very briefly, Jake Kramer. So this is a companion application. We requested R4 in addition to the urban expansion because that's, the, the Board of County Commissioners has given very explicit direction when we make these applications privately, they want to see them coming in as R4. And we think that's appropriate again in this area because we're wedged between conservation and industrial. And I'll just, I'll just note as David did that, you know, when you see the 1,800 potential units, the number feels scary, but as you all know, we never yield that, that many units. And so we think we're, we're probably in the range of about 600 to 700 units in, in reality, which is similar to when county staff came before you all and explained WVR2 and RP2, yeah, that, that sounds big with 23,000 acres, but when you actually look at what can be developed and what's the actual yield, it's, it's much, much smaller than that. So again, with that, our team's here if you have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. We had one individual sign up for this one. Mr. Randolph again?
Yeah. I'd just like to, my name is Todd Randolph, and I'd just like to reiterate the content of the letter submitted by Sierra Club. This was submitted by others. But being a part of the Tampa Bay Sierra Club group, I would just like to reiterate the content that's in this letter as well as what we just heard on the presentation that, you know, this, the flood zone of this parcel includes flood zone AE. Flood zone AE is an area designated as a high risk flood zone by FEMA. There's, there's, you know, it's trying to build, you know, an additional 600, 500 units into a flood zone area. So again, not to repeat what I've already stated in my previous statement, but this is not compliant with the comprehensive plan, and please deny CPA 257 and 258. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's all we had sign up for this one, so I will, yeah, there you go. It's Kramer.
Jake Kramer, at risk of beating a dead horse, I just wanted to point out there, there's only a very small portion of the property that is related to a flood zone. That is the wetlands that we have already preserved. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Over to the commissioners for questions, discussions. Commissioner Orton?
I should have said this on the previous case, but it applies to this one also. I believe we've already spoke with the developer, but because of the size of the property, and again, being in the AE flood zone, they are going to be required to dedicate some of this land to the school, because two of the schools are already at capacity, and by the number of units they're coming forward with, it will cause the third school to over, be over capacity. And it's 25 acres and it has to be uplands, and I believe one of my staff members has already spoken to the developer. I just wanted to make sure that that was said.
Understood. We're happy to walk, walk through the prop share process when it gets here. I mentioned, we haven't, we don't have a rezoning filed. We need to finish the current operations on the property, so may take a little while, but understood.
All right. Very good. Are there any other questions, comments, thoughts from the commissioners? Commissioner Lenkos?
I do just want to bring some attention to some of the things that are highlighted. The proximity to the Florida Ecological Greenways Network and some key water bodies, I think is just, I guess I would just take issue that there's such great momentum around preserving the Florida Wildlife Corridor and similar kinds of properties, and it's a treasure that we have these here, and this, it's not an arbitrary line. I definitely would beg to differ with that characterization of the urban service boundary and what it does. It is protects these really important features. I, I also applaud the applicant for a reasonable application, but there's, there are balancing act here, and I do think that, that there's really important environmental considerations here.
Thoughts? Thank you, Commissioner Lenkos. Are there any other questions or comments from the commissioners? I'll say for myself, because when the staff urban service area expansion came through, I wasn't really for it. And the reason why I voted for it this time in the previous item and why I'd probably support this item too, even though staff finds it inconsistent, and I can understand why staff found it inconsistent. When Hillsborough County staff came in here and talked to us about this area of the county, they provided a lot of information, and in my estimation, they made me feel like they have an eye on what's going on down there. Not that they're going to solve everything or come up with the right answers, but the county is aware of the growth that's going on, on, down there, and they do have their eye on it and are trying to come up with ways to handle it. So that gives me a little bit more relief this time on the vote. If anybody's wondering how I could have voted no last time and vote yes this time, it's because this time I see county staff before me informed and talking about what they're going to do, and so that gives me a bit of comfort. And it probably shows in the fact that the whole neighborhood isn't in here in this meeting again like the whole neighborhood was in the previous meeting when we were going to expand the urban service area. You know, now they've got some attention, now they've got some people listening to them and talking to them, so it makes me feel a little bit more comfortable letting this one go. So I just wanted to speak on that for a little bit, so my two cents. Are there any other thoughts, questions, comments from the commissioners? I am not seeing much in the public comments, so I'll go on ahead and close it down and open it up to motions from the commissioners on this item. Commissioner Kona?
Yeah. Motion to find HCCPA 2507 consistent with the comprehensive plan based on objective 1.1, policy 1.1.2, policy 2.1.2.
All right. So that's a consistency finding, objective 1.1, policy 1.1.2, and policy 2.1.2. Is there a second out there, Commissioner Buzza?
I'll second.
All right. That's a motion of consistency finding, signing those, that objective and two policies, and a second to that consistency finding by Commissioner Buzza. Are there any questions, thoughts, or clarifications needed from the commissioners before we take our vote? I'll go ahead and do a vocal vote first, and we'll see if we get through it. All right. But I'll signify their agreement with the consistency motion by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, we're going to need that roll call.
Bowden?
No.
Buzza?
Yes.
Cardenas?
Yes.
Kona?
Yes.
Kress?
No.
Lenkos?
No.
Lauk?
Yes.
Seaborn?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to three. Commissioner Bowden, Kress, and Lenkos voted no.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank, thank you to the applicant, thank you to staff for the information. That was our last agenda item for that public hearing, so at 6:10, the Hillsborough County Public Hearing is closed, adjourned. If you'll give me a second here, I will read us into our Plant City Public Hearing. Oh, all right. Good evening and welcome everyone to the June 9, 2025 Public Hearing of the Planning Commission on City of Plant City Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. For those attending in person and wishing to speak on any agenda item, please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. To minimize feedback in the audio, all online participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak. Planning commissioners should unmute themselves to indicate that they would like to speak. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. When your name is called, you will, you will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking. State your name at the beginning of your comments and adhere to the time limits. If anyone has difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to provide comments to be included in the record for the local government hearing, please email them to planner@plancom.org. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed, and then upon a motion, a second and discussion of vote will be taken. To all participants, please note that tonight's hearing concerns proposed changes to the comprehensive plan. Presentations should not include matters related to zoning applications and cite plans that are not before the commission. Zoning conditions are not relevant to planned amendments and may not be considered by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission's purview and making recommendation is limited to consistency or inconsistency with the comprehensive plan. And with that, I'd like to ask the clerk to call roll.
Bowden?
Yeah.
Buzza?
Here.
Cardenas?
Here.
Kona?
Here.
Kress?
Here.
Lauk?
Here.
Saria? Seaborn?
Here.
Barry?
Here.
Joseph?
Here.
You have a quorum, sir.
All righty. It looks like our first agenda item, 2A, PCCPA 2501 Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, 2900 East US Highway 92 and associated parcels was continued to September 8, 2025, so we will not be hearing that tonight, and instead we will move right on to 2B, PCCPA 2502 Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment 314 North Webb Road, and the presenter is Krista Kelly.
Thank you and good evening, Krista Kelly, Planning Commission Staff. I am presenting PCCPA 2502 for a site located at 314 North Webb Road. This is a privately initiated, small-scale map amendment on 2.39 acres. This site was annexed into Plant City in 2015. Currently, the site is designated Hillsborough County Light Industrial, and the applicant is requesting a change to Plant City Industrial. As you see on the location map, the site is located on the eastern side of Plant City. It is within the northeast Plant City Area Ambassador Plan Boundary, excuse me, and the site specifically is located on the west side of Webb Road, north approximately a third of a mile south of, I mean, north of US 92 or also known as Baker Street. The site is also adjacent to the Sterling Commerce Center to the north and east. This is an aerial of the site outlined in the pink dash lines, and you see the site is currently vacant. Lands to the north were used for agricultural purposes, and that large tract, at the very top is FDOT property. Just to get your orientation, I-4 is also to the north outside of the view of this slide. To the west, the site abuts the agricultural property and then the Southern Oaks Industrial or Business Park to the west. To the south, along Webb Road, the site is adjacent to rural home sites on large tracts that use access of Webb Road, and also a mobile home park to the south which gains access off of US 92. To the east, again, is the Sterling Commerce Park. It also obtains access from County Line Road, which is this road here, and to the north, just again to orient you, it is just a little bit south of the I-4 County Line Road interchange. From a street view, this is looking- From a street view, this is looking at the subject site on the west side of Webb Road. This is looking north from the site. As you can see, there's construction currently underway as part of the Sterling Commerce Park or Center. This is the site, a lot in the Commerce Center directly to the east of the subject property across Webb Road. And then this is looking from the site, south towards US 92. Here you see the northeast Plant City Area Master Plan, which identifies the site as envisioned for industrial uses, future industrial uses, as is the area to the northeast and south of the site. Further south of the industrial properties, there is Residential 4, which is recognizing the mobile home park and the rural residential homes along the road. The commercial and industrial use here are clustered around the I-4 County Line Road interchange and recognizing commercial uses in that area. This is the adopted future land use map, showing the site currently as a transitional area, which is identifying it as a property that has been annexed but does not have a Plant City land use classification. Again, the future land use map reflects industrial uses to the northeast and south, as well as commercial uses, and then to the south beyond the industrial properties areas designated Residential 4. And this is the proposed map, now showing the site designated Plant City Industrial, similar to the uses surrounding it. Staff reviewed the impacts. Currently, up to 78,000 square feet of non-residential uses could be considered for the site. If it were to be amended to Plant City Industrial, the site would allow up to 52,000 square feet of industrial uses. In both cases, residential as a sole use is not permitted. However, currently, limited residential for accessory uses is permitted. In summary, the plant amendment will reduce the amount of square footage allowed for non-residential uses and eliminate any residential development potential of the site. Staff reviewed the proposed amendment for consistency with the comprehensive plan and found it consistent and supported by the following land use policies. Please note these objectives and policies used for this review are provided in your packet. Land use policies under the General Development Section direct new development to urbanizing areas and encourages redevelopment and infill to areas served by public facilities. The amendment is consistent with this direction, as it's situated adjacent to the Sterling Commerce Center, which is an approved and developing industrial-commercial plan development. Additionally, the applicant has stated the intent of the amendment is to incorporate this subject site with the industrial land use into the Sterling Commerce Center. Land use policies related to compatibility provide guidelines intended to create compatible conditions between existing and new development. The listed land use policies require a variety of techniques intended to ensure compatibility, including the use of visual and spatial buffering, and limiting access of higher intensity uses adjacent to residential areas to collectors and arterials. In this case, once the site is integrated into the Sterling Commerce Center, the site will be oriented and access will be obtained from County Line Road, which is a collector roadway. Staff looked at the vision map, which is associated with the northeast master plan. The proposed amendment site is within the boundary of the master plan and was reviewed based on the master plan's guidelines per policy 2.6.2 and 2.6.3. The master plan's preferred land use scenario map shows the subject site designated industrial and is adjacent to lands designated industrial and commercial to the east and southeast. Additionally, the proposed amendment aligns with the northeast master plan's policy direction, which calls for the orderly extension of public facilities and integrated land use patterns, as shown on the preferred land use scenario map. Lastly, the proposed amendment to designate the subject site industrial is supported by land use policies under the Economic Growth Section. These policies give priority to new developments that are linked to economic assets. The I-4 County Line Road interchange is a significant economic asset, and the concentration of industrial development growing in the area reflects this synergy. In addition, the proposed industrial use of the subject site is consistent with land use policies that call for the increased supply of industrial and commercial lands as a strategy to attract target industries and to encourage targeted areas of development. Based on this review and the staff findings, Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment, PCCPA 2502, be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Plant City Comprehensive Plan. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Is there an applicant presentation?
Good evening. Phil Walden, 2736 Gulf Lake Drive, Plant City, Florida. We concur with the staff report. Just for the record, the property is being included in the existing Sterling Commerce Center. We're in a process right now of doing a zoning modification. There will be no increase in the square footage, no increase in traffic locations. Webb Road is a road we don't use right now, it's still the same situation then, so nothing will be changed. The only thing we're doing is adding the two acres into the site. I stand to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We didn't have anyone sign up in the public comment for this one, so I will turn it over to the planning commissioners. I see you moving.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that Robin Baker from, oh, you don't want to speak on this one. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
All right. So I'll turn it back over to the planning commissioners for questions, comments, discussions of this one. Not seeing a lot of excitement or movement, so I will go on ahead and close the public comment on this one and open it up to motions from the planning commissioners. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Buzza, didn't see you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move to find CPA 25-02, consistent with Plant City Comprehensive Plan, and forward on to the Plant City Commission.
All right. Motion of consistency provided by Commissioner Buzza.
Second.
Who said that?
I said it, but he has.
Then it's on you.
Second. Second.
Motion of consistency founded by Commissioner Buzza, second by Commissioner Kona decrees the chair. Are there any questions or comments, clarifications needed before we take our vote? Not seeing any, then we'll all signify their agreement by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next up, we have item 2C, PCCPA 25-03 Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, North Alexander Street, south of Sam Allen Road, and the presenter is Krista Kelly.
Thank you, Krista Kelly, Planning Commission staff again. I'm presenting PCCPA 2503. This is a site located on the west side of North Alexander Street, south of Sam Allen Road. This is a privately initiated map amendment. It's approximately 15.7 acres in size, and this site was annexed into the city limits of Plant City in November of 2024. Currently, the site is designated Hillsborough County Residential 1, and the applicant is requesting a change to Plant City Commercial. As you see on the location map, it's in the northern portion of Plant City. It is also within the northeast Plant City Area Master Plan Boundary. And again, it is on the west side of North Alexander Street, approximately a third of a mile south of Sam Allen Road. This is an aerial of the site outlined in pink. As you can see, it's currently vacant. The blue line indicates the city limits, which crosses North Alexander Street and encompasses the property. The urban service boundary then returns back and trails down to Alexander Street to I-4. In the surrounding area, you see a mixture of rural residential development to the north and agricultural lands to the north and south and west. When you cross North Alexander Street on the east side, you see more dense but still rural development between, out North Alexander Street and Paul Buckman Highway. To the south, you see open land. This is, this large property here is stormwater management property for Plant City, and it's also a city pistol range. And in this little notch, I wanted to point out, there are two homes that are built here and people living off of Terrace Drive. Okay, this is a street view. This is looking southwest at the subject property with the trees. To the north, this is a large property used for croplands. This is looking north from the subject site towards Sam Allen's, the intersection with Sam Allen Road. On the right-hand side, you see a large retention area, and again, on the left side, you see the croplands. This is off of Terrace Drive, that little notched-out area with the two homes tucked away here, so the subject property surrounds it on the west and on the north. And this is looking off from Casey Road, which is south of the subject property and leads to that stormwater management facility that I showed you. And again, the subject property is on the left-hand side. And this is, I drove down Casey Road to see, and you see, you can barely see the stormwater management ponds here and some sort of construction. Okay, this is the adopted future land use map, and the blue hashed line shows the city limits cutting across from Paul Buckman Highway west and crossing Alexander Street to include the subject site, and then returning again back to Alexander Street, and then running to I-4, to the I-4 interchange. The amendment site is outlined by a black hashed line and is shown as a transitional area, meaning the property has not been annexed into Plant City, but it has been annexed into Plant City but does not have a Plant City designation. It currently retains the Hillsborough County Residential 1 designation. Lands on the west side of Alexander Street include the subject site, including the subject site are designated Hillsborough County Residential 1, with the exception of a few parcels at the intersection of Sam Allen Road and Alexander Street, which are designated Residential 2. Both the Residential 1 and Residential 2 designations are considered rural and semi-rural designations that are intended to recognize existing rural communities and agricultural uses and to allow for rural-scale residential uses compatible with agriculture. Lands within the city limits on the east side of Alexander Street are predominantly designated Residential 4. Residential 4 is used to identify the least intensely developed residential areas of Plant City. The densities and intensities increased from Residential 4 to Residential 12, commercial and industrial, as you travel east toward Paul Buckman Highway. This is the proposed future land use map, showing the subject site designated commercial. The commercial land use category allows for a range of uses from individual retail sales and office uses to more intense uses like office complexes, shopping centers, and dealerships. Residential uses may be permitted as a secondary use, limited to 20% of the development area. If approved, the site would be the only commercial property designated on the west side of, west of North Alexander Street, from I-4 to the Pasco County Line. As noted earlier, the site falls within the boundary of the northeast master plan, Preferred Land Use Scenario Map, which was adopted in 2008 and was recently updated and adopted in April of this year. The initial review of the amendment was done using the adopted 2008 version, which was effective at the time the application was submitted. On this map, the lands to the south and the subject site are designated natural preservation for the most part. The natural preservation designation is intended to recognize environmentally sensitive lands and limits the use to passive activities or conservation. Specific to this site, approximately 4.9 acres of wetland are contained within the 15.7-acre site, according to EPC. To the north, the lands are designated Residential 4, a category that is used to recognize the least intensely developed areas of Plant City. At this point, staff acknowledges that the adopted Preferred Land Use Scenario Map changed the subject site's designation to light commercial office designation. So here you see the original Preferred Land Use Scenario Map shown on the left, and the newly adopted and updated map on the right, which is now in effect. As a result of the update, the amendment site and surrounding area was revised to recognize existing commercial development along Sam Allen Road between Alexander Street and Paul Buckman, and to provide a gradual transition and flexibility in the type of land uses allowed as you traveled south along North Alexander Street from that intersection. The designation of the subject site and several other properties along North Alexander Street were changed to light commercial office as well, that's the light pink color, to promote the desired gradual transition of uses from the intersection of Alexander Street and Sam Allen Road. In addition, the crosshatching represents the area covered by a future economic opportunity overlay, which was recreated in concept as part of the update to the Preferred Land Use Scenario Map. The intent of the overlay is to recognize economically significant corridors and to facilitate flexibility in changing land uses to be responsive to market demands. At this time, there are no implementing regulations associated with this overlay. The light commercial office land use category allows for limited low-traffic generating uses such as personal services, small office, low-intensity retail. The land use category does not permit industrial uses, outdoor storage, or any visible sign of intensive commercial enterprise, which is allowed by the commercial land use category. It also allows for flexibility by allowing for residential development up to a density of 10 units per acre, which could be unobtrusively integrated with the surrounding rural residential development. The scenario map was revised to concentrate new commercial development at the intersection of Alexander Street and I-4. This is in alignment with the city's vision, which identifies the area as a commercial Currently, up to 15 dwelling units and approximately 171,735 square feet of non-residential use can be considered. If the amendment were approved, up to 252 dwelling units could be considered, as well as 240,429 square feet of non-residential. In summary, this would allow for an additional 237 dwelling units and would increase the allowable square footage for non-residential uses by 68,694 square feet. Staff reviewed the proposed amendment for consistency with the Plant City Comprehensive Plan and found it inconsistent, based on the following objectives and policies and the future land use and environmental elements. These objectives and policies are provided in your packet for further reference. Staff found that the amendment to designate the site commercial is contradictory to a number of land use and environmental policies. The amendment is inconsistent with the development strategies provided by Policy 7.1.3, 7.1.4, and 7.5.5, which direct new growth and development to areas contiguous to urbanized lands where public facilities are available and further support infill and redevelopment activities. Environmental policies 1.9.2, 1.9.5, 1.9.6, and 1.9.7 promote the protection of environmental lands by various mitigation techniques, including redirecting new development to environmentally acceptable activity centers and the clustering of development intensities away from environmentally sensitive areas. Staff notes that the Plant City vision map identifies a major commercial activity center at the intersection of Alexander Street and I-4. at the intersection of Alexander Street and I-4 which is intended to accommodate, accommodate future commercial development. The subject site is in an area that is characterized by rural and agricultural uses. Staff finds that establishing a commercial designation and allowing for intense commercial uses in this area would be intrusive and premature in this rural setting. Staff reviewed the proposed amendment for consistency with the general vision of the Northeast Master Plan using the guidance from Policies, Land Use Policies 2.6.2 and 2.6.3 and criteria provided by Policy 2.6.4 to determine if the amendment supports the vision of the Northeast Master Plan. Per the recently-adopted Preferred Land Use Scenario Map, the subject site is designated light commercial office which allows for limited low-traffic generating uses. In contrast, the proposed land use change to commercial would allow for a significant intensification of non-residential-type uses and as a result, does not align with the Preferred Land Use Scenario envisioned by the Master Plan and would introduce the potential for intense urban-scale development not contemplated for this area. Staff noted that the land uses in this area include, including the subject site, were updated to provide for a gradual transition of densities and intensities extending south from the intersection of North Alexander Street and Sam Allen Road and to allow for flexibility as the light commercial office designation allows for commercial and residential development. Based on the intent of the update of this plan, staff finds the proposed amendment inconsistent. Lastly, staff finds the proposed change is inconsistent with Land Use Policies 7.4.5 and 8.3.5 which provide guidance in achieving compatibility between existing and new development. The amendment side is unique in that it is the only property annexed into Plant City on the west side of North Alexander Street and with the exception of a few parcels, the land to the west, the lands on the west side of North Alexander Street are designated Hillsborough County Residential One from Kason Road to the Hillsborough County line to the north. The area is designated Hillsborough County One recognizing the established rural and agricultural character in the area. Based on these findings and reviews, Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment, PCCPA 2503, be found inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Plant City Comprehensive Plan. And I, that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And as Ms. Ornita pointed out, our Planning Director for Plant City is here if she would like to speak to any of my points.
Is there an applicant presentation or no? Yep.
Yes.
Please, come forward.
The applicant, I'm sorry about that.
Good evening, I have a presentation to be loaded. Thank you, my name is, good evening, my name is Susan Swift, I'm a certified planner and I'm Director of Planning for Bob Boggs Engineering. Our address is 607 South Alexander Street in Plant City. And with me are Mark and Lori Yarborough, they are the applicants and the owners of Intrac Industries. And if you have any questions that I can't answer or for them after I'm completed, I'm sure I'll have enough time left for, for you to ask questions. As Ms. Kelly explained, we're here for a land use plan amendment from County Residential One to Plant City Commercial. We also have an accompanying, accompanying plan development rezoning with the city that are, that's running concurrently. I do think that this application has, is a bit confusing because of the timing of it. The recent annexation and in the middle, the, as, as Ms. Kelly explained, the April 14th adoption of the Northeast Master Plan update. So this application was submitted before that. And we, with the, the Yarboroughs eagerness to open their new headquarters or to move to their new headquarters, their business is sales and leasing of construction equipment, a business that they have had for more than 20 years. And although it looks like a big jump from Residential One to Commercial, as you heard, it's really however, from light commercial office that was just changed in the Northeast Master Plan to commercial. It's not as big of a jump as it would appear. In addition, the city, in the discussions of the Northeast Master Plan update, although these are not fully in place yet, I will show you a lot of text in the Master Plan document that speaks to this area in transition and the other flexibilities that the city recognizes and that the plan update recognized for this area. So, there we go. So, Alexander Street is a state road, it's a corridor in transition. If you see to the way north of this part of the plan, there's 400 acres of industrial, Paul Buckman, Alexander Street. I'm going to kind of show you kind of the four or five major reasons I think this area is different and why this use is different. It, it is, the segment of this road of Alexander, State Road 39, is different. The use is less impactful than many of the light commercial office uses. It is compatible with the surrounding uses, it's consistency, consistent with the policies, which I'll show you other policies. And then the preservation land use idea, I'll also talk about why that's really not necessary because the wetlands are already being preserved. So you can see from this map, it's between Buckman, Alexander, I-4, and Sam Allen. That area is already changing, this is just fitting right into it. This was already covered, but the April update of the Master Plan recognized all these changes. There are utilities coming to this area on Sam Allen, it's a regional transportation network, it's already had other annexations aside from this site. The, these are some of the statements from the Northeast Master Plan that I mentioned without reading them to you. Your staff worked closely with the city staff of Plant City and the stakeholders over the last couple of years. These are some of the text in the plan that explain why flexibility is needed here and why the city has built in flexibility for this area. It is going through a major transition. And this, this document created an economic or will create an economic opportunity overlay, this site is within that overlay. And the middle paragraph, the purpose of, of the economic overlay is to facilitate the transitioning of an area to non-residential uses in a context-sensitive manner along strategic corridors, my underline, to maximize the logistical value of the areas not anticipated by the preferred map scenario, Scenario Map. This site is exactly why we're here. This, this paragraph speaks to the Yarboroughs' site. In addition, the, one of the many reasons why, or several other reasons why this segment of Alexander, south of Sam Allen, is different between Sam Allen and really all the way down to I-4. DOT has bought the properties in red to the north of us. All these other blue properties are owned by the county and the, the gun right below, even though it looks like a nice lake on the maps, right below us is the gun range that the city owns. So, a lot of this segment is not going to develop as a neighborhood, it's not going to transition into single-family neighborhood, light office, commercial kinds of uses. It's a, I'll get to this slide, it's a, a major corridor, it's not walkable, it's four-lane divided, it's not really conducive to neighborhood retail or neighborhood-serving retail or, or neighborhood uses. It's going to develop as business-serving uses and uses that serve that 400-acre industrial area just a mile or half a mile up the road. So, it's a four-lane divided principal arterial, it's probably as wide as Dale Mabry. I-4 is just a half a mile south, Sam Allen is just a quarter-mile to the north. All these, almost every property between those two major roads are government-owned. The only ones, the only large parcel that is not is the, one of the ones to the north of us that are crops and one parcel to the west. And the three, there are actually three single-family homes to the south of us, I'll show you that on the, on the lot. One is, the one closest to Alexander, the main road, is actually vacant and I think it's, it's owned by a bank, so the other two houses are occupied and they're single-family houses on one-acre lots. They are, they are right by Alexander Street. I don't think those will develop as single-family neighborhoods in the future. Again, the whole area is different, this site is different. The proposed FAR, you'll, I know you're, you don't consider PDs, you're not voting on the PD, but I'll show you the plan anyway. There's a lot of open space. My biggest point on this is the preservation for the land, the wetlands, is not needed for this site. It's already state law, it's county law, city law, they have to reserve these wetlands. They're actually located in the middle of the site, so the Yarboroughs are only building on the north part of the site, the north third. The wetland is in the middle, that's being preserved, already been approved by EPC. There's a 25-foot wetland setback, EPC had no objection in their comments. And then to the south of that, the, this is compatible because there is a huge tree save area on the site plan between, so there's a wetland, a five-acre wetland almost, probably one or two-acre tree save area between what's being proposed to be built on, one of the few uplands, and the homes to the south. It's, I'm sorry. Again, I know, I know the, the, you're not dealing with the PD, but it's, it's a fact that it's being run through and it has additional protections. The wetlands have tons of protections, they don't need preservation land use on them. And these are the things that are going to protect the two, three homes at the south end. Those are also on the new April 14th plan, those three homes are also designated light and, light commercial office, so they're already proposed for commercial. They're, they're not going to, going to, as I said, they're not really conducive to become single-family neighborhoods because they're divided by all that government land. So they're very isolated, abut, abutting Alexander. And the policies, you know, we all pick out policies from the plan, I think these are very strong and the first one, 2.6.3, speaks exactly to this site. It's orderly annexation, transportation, other public facilities will be provided. And this policy 7.4.5 actually speaks to mitigation of adverse impacts, so if the wetland is being mitigated, it's preserved, it's not going to be destroyed. And there's also, for compatibility reasons, the trees are, they are in addition to the 4.9-acre wetland. So, I think there are sufficient policies to show consistency, not only with the, the Northeast Master Plan map, but the update. And it's compatible, there's a significant amount of distance between those single-family homes, they're already light commercial office designation or will be. And I think between the compatibility and the consistency issue, we've shown that this site and this corp, segment of the corridor is different than, and, and offers the flexibility for this to be changed to commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We had a couple people sign up for the public comment, but I'm just gonna go through it. I'll start with Robin Baker.
Thank you so much, good evening. Robin Baker, Director of Planning and Zoning for the City of Plant City. As you know, we're asked for our comments early in the process, long before we're able to hear staff's recommendation. And so, the comments that were in the record were pretty vague as to the fact that we were supporting the request, but only shared a couple of concerns about wetlands and such. So I wanted to, on the record, state why staff, city staff supports the request. As you know, we just updated the Northeast Master Plan, it's been discussed at length, but my recollection of why we chose light commercial office for this particular property is slightly different. I mean, as you look at the categories that we have available, the purpose of the Northeast Master Plan, at least this round of update, was to look at major corridors within the city and how and where more intensive, you know, uses should be allowed. That was the whole purpose of opening the map for update. And so we looked at all of the major corridors, this being one of them, one of the few major arterials that we have running through the city. But when you're looking at something like that and you're trying to produce what came out of this whole thing, this, this term flexibility, you don't have very many land uses to choose from, okay? If we choose industrial, then that's all you're doing, is industrial with a little bit of support commercial and no residential. If we choose commercial, you can't do some of the industrial uses and your residential is limited to only 20%. So the only option that we had to provide complete flexibility, all commercial, all residential, or a combination of both, was light commercial office. And that's why that particular category was chosen and especially in between Sam Allen and I-4 because in our one-on-one meetings with our commissioners, they were very specific about expanding the commercial uses at Sam Allen and North Alexander and then also at I-4, which is what was shown on the map. But in those areas in between, we began to struggle with which category do we choose? And that was the only category available that gave us complete flexibility. Now this particular type of use that is being presented may be considered intensive commercial to some, but in the City of Plant City, we don't have an intensive commercial category, okay? We have neighborhood commercial or general commercial, that's it. And the Comprehensive Plan describes some of these things as intensive, but our commercial categories require everything to happen within an enclosed building, which ultimately will have to be proposed on this project. You combine that with the economic opportunity overlay and even though we don't have regulations for that yet, we are beginning to work through that. I do anticipate complete flexibility on some of these properties based on the fact that they are required to do a PD and we can flush out some of the conditions in the end. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, I have, well, I have Mark and Lori Yarborough signed up if you'd like to speak, yeah? She got three minutes.
Yes, Mark Yarborough, thanks for listening to me, my wife and I are longtime Plant Cityans, multi-generational, and we love our town, we love Plant City. And we feel that what we're trying to do is certainly in line with what the city's vision is for the future use, future development going on through, you know, from Alexander all the way north. Just gonna keep it brief here, I'm happy to answer any questions about what we do, but we would certainly appreciate your support with this, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Yarborough, did you want to speak now? You good? All right. And that's all we had sign up for the public comment, so, is there, I guess I can give the applicant a chance to rebut, did you want to say anything? You're good? All right. Turn it over to the Commissioners then for comments, questions, I see Commissioner will... I see Commissioner Leuck moving. Here we go.
Yes, I just wanted to say a couple things. One, thank Plant City staff for coming out and providing some clarity from the local, from the local municipality. Easy for you to say, it's getting, it's getting late early. And then the second question I had, and I'm sure it's user error based on some of the content that I just heard, was there an actual staff report from the city in here in terms of where that was? Because I looked through it, and we had some, some write-ups from Water, we had some write-ups from the, some of the other entities in there, but I didn't see anything from Plant City staff in terms of.
They did provide comments regarding the utilities as one document, and then there was a second reviewing the comprehensive plan amendment. It was a one-page, a long table, and I believe it was dark with white writing.
Again, user error. I looked and looked and looked and just couldn't find it.
It didn't have a recommendation with it.
That's what I was.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it did, they, they were just stating the facts surrounding the site.
Good. I don't feel that bad that I, that I left after reading the report not knowing where Plant City stood.
Thank you, Commissioner Leuck. Are there any, Commissioner Orton?
I just have a couple of questions. First of all, what's the speed limit on North Alexander? And what's the access? How do those two homes have access? Because they look like they're landlocked. And then how will this property gain access if there's wetlands through the middle and they're going to build on the north side? So those, just a few questions I have.
Okay. I can, I am not sure, but I believe the speed limit is likely 65 miles per hour. Isn't it, doesn't it?
It's 50.
Oh, it is 50? I'm sorry. I don't, I didn't know that. But the, the homes on the south side, the homes on the south side get access from Terrace Drive? It, it's like a stubout. Yeah, it's a little apron road that stubs out into that property, into the.
Because it goes across. Can I have you on the microphone? Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I know we're not doing the site plan or anything. I was just curious how they're getting to the property, if they're changing the future land use there.
I need you on the microphone, please.
Come up and identify yourself.
I'm looking at the property appraiser, and according to them, they are landlocked.
If you'd like, I, I know you're not considering the, their, DOT has bought so much property, including property from, or taken property from the InTrak site, that there's, there's a million little pieces of DOT property along there, and they have access, you probably, it's probably still so small you can't see, but they, they have, is there a way to point to this?
Yeah, it's right here.
Okay, sorry. They, they actually have access to their site, and I've been there, and actually Christie's photo is from where mine are. And if you, so they're, they're not landlocked. They've got, they've got access.
All right. Are there any other questions, comments, thoughts from the commissioners? Commissioner Bowden?
I have another question.
Oh, Ms. Swift?
Of the applicant.
Come back. There you go.
And, and one of those maps that FDOT has like a slipper that goes down like about one-third of the property.
Yes, and, and.
And if I'm not mistaken, it was something used for wastewater or water treatment or?
They, they, DOT owns, to the north, here, actually, there's a better, yeah. So the, the blue on this one is the applicant's site, although it's kind of smushed. DOT owns this, this is a pond, and, and this, DOT has agreed, and we have it in writing, to lease this to the applicant. And then DOT owns all this, and then they own little things down here as well, all the way down I-4, they own little jotted pieces.
And they're building in the north, they're going to build on the north side of it?
Yes. Their, their building is, is right in here, and then the whole central part of this is well, and, and then the trees will be staying here adjacent to these two houses. The third house I was talking about is actually way over here, and that's the one in the, in the bank name, and it appears to be abandoned right now. But these two single-family homes are on, I think they're one-acre lots.
I'm trying to visualize, I saw like a dirt road someplace. I'm trying to see where this dirt road is in relationship to that.
The, on our PD, we propose just a dirt road, because we'll have a little pond back here, just for maintenance of the pond.
The staff has showed a road in, in their pictures.
Oh.
I believe that was for the police shooting range and.
Yeah, Kason.
Oh, okay.
Street was the road beyond, you can't see it in this picture, but there's a pond right here, and then there's Kason Road.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. You have any other, yes, Commissioner Linkus?
I would just echo the comment, and I do appreciate the city's insight. I think this is, this is a tough case because of the, the timing and the, and the many policies that are in evolution, and it was very unclear to me kind of what was going on in terms of this economic overlay until you explained that. So I do appreciate that, that you took the time to be here and explain that.
All right. And I'll just throw out there that if anybody's going against staff, we're going to need some objectives, policies, goals to go with that, so just keep that in mind out there. I don't know which way people are going, but I'll just throw that disclaimer out there. Any other questions, comments, discussion topics from the commissioners? I'll just throw out a thank you to Plant City staff also for clarifying. That was well said also in your three minutes, so you sped through that. Very good. Thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners before I go on ahead and shut down public comment? All right. Well, public comments close on this item, and I will open it up to motions from the commissioners on this one. Commissioner Buzza?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move that we find PCCPA 25, 25-03 consistent with the Plant City Comprehensive Plan forwarded on to the Plant City Commission, citing land use policies 2, 2.64, and land use policy 8.1.3.
Was that, was that 2.6.4?
2.6.4.
Okay. And 8.1.3.
8.1.3.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And that's a consistency motion from Commissioner Buzza. Is there?
I'll say it.
All right. We have a second by Commissioner Kona. Are there any questions, comments, clarifications required from the commissioners before we vote? And all signify their agreement with the consistency finding by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Carries unanimously. All righty. That was our last item of business for tonight. Thank you to all the applicants. Thank you to staff for all the information. And at 7:03, this public hearing is adjourned. Good night, everybody.